Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is the City Council meeting and public hearing for September 9th, 2024, for the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Note for the record, all members of council are present and accounted for. And as always, we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up on our agenda this evening is presentations and proclamations. And today, we will be honoring proclamation for Constitution Week. So if members of our daughters of the American Revolution will join me up front. Certainly wonderful to have you here with us to...
Thank you.
...this proclamation, as we always do, and recognize the document that makes this great nation possible. So would you like to share a moment?
I would, yes. I would like to say we're honored to accept this proclamation and that we believe it's more important than ever to honor or to keep Constitution Week in place because this document is a treasure to our country and we pray that it will always be treasured by the people of the United States of America. Thank you so kindly. No, that's good.
Okay. So I'll read this proclamation. This is proclamation by the mayor and the city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, for Constitution Week. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, United States Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week beginning September 17th, 2024, as Constitution Week in the City of Alpharetta and urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the drafters of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. So proclaimed this ninth day of September, 2024, by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. There are several items on the consent agenda this evening, first being city council meeting minutes from the meeting of July 29th, 2024, the city council meeting minutes from the meeting of August 19th, 2024, the city council meeting minutes from the meeting of August 26th, 2024, alcoholic beverage license applications, which include PH-24-AB-15 Samurai Restaurant Group LLC, DBA, Edo Japanese Cuisine, 2500 North Point Court, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30022, PH-24-AB-16 Rome Group LLC, DBA Hampton Inn and Suites, 10740 Westside Way, Alpharetta, Georgia, 3009. There's also settlement agreement and the release for Anemchio Samuel and the right-of-way deed, Lakeview Park and Hansbridge Road frontage. And the final item on the consent agenda is the public access easement agreement with Firefly Subdivision. Would anything, would any council member like to remove an agenda item from the consent Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to speak about the consent agenda, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion from council on that item?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Will, a second by Councilman Mitchell, and that was to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of motion to approve the item, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll conclude the consent agenda. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. First announcement, Ms. Tracy, if you don't mind.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll just go over the public hearing procedures for this evening. They are as follows. An individual requesting to be heard on a matter related to the purpose of the hearing must be recognized by the mayor before addressing the city council. Upon rising to speak, the speaker must identify himself and furnish a home address before proceeding with any comments or remarks. The council will allow the proponents a total of 10 minutes to speak in support of an application. Opponents will be allowed 10 minutes to speak in opposition. Comments are accepted first from the applicant, followed by persons speaking in favor, and then from those in opposition. Upon conclusion of any opposing comments or presentations, the mayor will allow the applicant to offer rebuttal if any time is remaining in the original allotted 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. So the first item under the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting will be V-24-21, Christian, 204 Marietta Street setback variance. Mr. Woodman, I believe you have this item.
The first item before you this evening is a variance request to allow for the construction of a two-story, 14,000-square-foot office building on 1.14 acres in the downtown. Variance is requested to reduce the front setback along Marietta Street. Have the location map on the overhead. This property is located at 204 Marietta Street. The property is zoned OP, Office Professional. It's located within the downtown overlay and has a comprehensive land use plan designation of mixed use, which does allow the proposed use and the proposed setback. A variance is requested to the OP zoning district development regulations to reduce the front building setback along Marietta Street from 50 feet to 10 feet. The future land use designation of this property would support a rezoning of the property to downtown mixed use. However, the applicant's use is already allowed within the OP zoning. So instead of rezoning the property, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front setback in order to pull the building up to the street. This is the applicant's site plan. To orient you, this is Marietta Street. This property also has double road frontage, so it backs onto Old Milton Parkway here and then Marietta Street. There's an existing structure on the property today currently being used for an office. This is the new building here with about a 7,000-square-foot footprint with the parking around to the sides and rear of the building. Access to the property is through two curb cuts from Marietta Street. The building is proposed on this site plan with a 15-foot setback. The applicant requests 10, but there's actually 15 feet between the new property line and the front of the building. That would place the building approximately 29 feet from the edge of the road of Marietta Street. There's a 10-foot landscape strip required along the property frontage, and then the streetscape would be upgraded with a 6-foot planter and a 6-foot sidewalk. This is consistent with the other properties that have been approved along the south side of Marietta Street. The adjacent property to the east, 182 Marietta Street, was rezoned to allow for a single residential unit. That was approved with a 15-foot setback. Similar setback than what's approved. So this is an exhibit of all of Marietta Street. This is the applicant's property here. It is setback approximately 29 feet. The building is setback approximately 29 feet from the edge of road. The adjacent property to the east, 182 Marietta Street, the residence, that is setback 28 feet from the edge of the road. And then more recently, I believe it was last month, this property, 152 Marietta Street, was rezoned to DTMU, and this is 28 feet from the edge of the road. The applicant also provided a tree survey and assessment. They are showing on the site plan saving a 29-inch specimen water oak located here, and then there are six red oaks along Old Milton Parkway that range in size from 13 inches to 22 inches that are saved with this plan. This is the applicant's landscape plan. So all this is, the only difference between these two plans, of course, the proposed landscaping is shown on this plan, but they removed the on-street parking. So in the site plan here, they were showing five on-street parking spaces. The other streetscapes that have been approved along Marietta Street have not provided on-street parking. So to maintain that consistency, we asked the applicant to remove the on-street parking. That's what you see in the landscape plan. This is the building that is proposed for this property. The applicant's architect indicates the building is in the Mercantile Mill architectural style. It's got a low-pitched hip roof and cornice in the Italianate style, and it has brick exterior with some cast stone details. Of course, looking at the review criteria for a variance, we found the property is located in the downtown, which promotes walkability by bringing the buildings up to the street with the parking to the side and rear. As I mentioned, the downtown zoning district that would be appropriate for this property would allow for a 10-foot front setback. And as I mentioned, the applicant took the route of the variance instead of rezoning the property in this instance. Property does have some hardships with the double road frontage, and then, of course, being located in the downtown, you have to have the parking to the side or rear of the building. And then, of course, we have some other examples of similar setbacks that have been approved along the street. The applicant did provide a citizen participation plan. They indicated they had received two emails from surrounding residents with concerns with the setback variance. Staff also spoke to the adjacent property owner to the west. She was in support of the applicant's request. She just asked that... There are a few, three trees here at the back corner of the site. This would be the southwest corner of the site. She asked that those just be changed to an evergreen landscape material and that she would be, she would be allowed to continue to park on the property. We showed this to the public at the August 14th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were three public comments that were left from property owners in Will's Common, which is the subdivision to the north and west of this site. Concerns that were left in those comments included buildings too close to the street, building has a commercial look, concerns about traffic, and then they also suggested that the site would have access from Old Milton Parkway. Of course, our codes do require that you access the property from the lower classification street, which would be Marietta Street. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's requests, subject to 11 conditions as stated in the staff report in your reports. And we are, in those conditions, we are recommending a 15-foot setback along Marietta Street. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Woodman? Mayor Protem?
Michael, there've been conversations going on since the middle of last week in regards to some of the neighbors and the applicant discussing changing that 15 feet to 20 feet to allow planting of trees to get around the power lines.
Yes.
Does staff have a problem with that? Would that be an issue?
I mean, I think our preference would be the plan that the applicant has submitted here in the site plan with the 15-foot setback. If he, if the building was pushed back an additional five feet for a 20-foot setback, it would impact the structural root plate of the specimen tree. It's a 29-inch water oak. And then one of the trees of quality, a 16-inch red oak. So both of their structural root plates would be impacted, so you do have to remove the tree at that point. So our preference would be to keep the setback as shown on the site plan. However, we wouldn't object to the additional five feet. The offset is that you're going to lose two trees if you push it back five additional feet.
We can plant more trees, right?
You can certainly replant, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Will.
Michael, can you just clarify something for me and anybody else who's completely up to how you do this? You had talked about the original, the original zoning was 50 foot back, and now you're saying they're asking for a variance to 15, but on the plan, you're showing it 29. Can you explain what all those mean?
Yeah, so the front setback is measured from your front property line, but when people's perception of a building being adjacent to the street and when they hear it's only going to be 10-foot, a 10-foot setback along the street, they're envisioning that to be 10-foot from the edge of the street. They're not counting the planter area, the sidewalk, and then any other right-of-way behind the sidewalk before you get to the front property line.
So this is 29 feet from the actual street and then 15 feet from what?
Correct. 15 feet from the front property line.
From the front property line.
Yes, that's what you're seeing here in the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
So, Michael, I want to make sure, if it were to move back five feet more, it would kill the largest 29-inch caliber tree, is that right?
It would impact the specimen tree that was proposed to be saved. So that was, it's this 29-inch water oak right here, and it's, it's got about a 30% impact, which you could do some tree care to offset the 30% impact, although staff typically cuts that at 20%. The problem here is that it encroaches into the structural root plate, which is what keeps the tree standing. And so once you encroach into the structural root plate, the tree cannot be saved. So would impact this tree, and then there's a 16-inch red oak here. That is not a specimen.
Yeah, it's a nice tree canopy back there, isn't it? All right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Woodman? Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ethan Underwood. I'm an attorney with the firm of Miles Hansford. Our address here in Alpharetta is 178 South Main Street. I have been brought onto the team a little late, so I do need to just provide for the record our reservation of rights there. But with that, I'm here representing Providence Partners, and Phil Christian is one of their principals. And we're here to say, we're here to work with the city. We have a proposal that's been submitted, and we know that staff has proposed some modification to that. Thank you, sir. And we'll, we'll work with the city how you want, but what frankly, we're here to do is save trees, and we're asking for some leeway to be able to do that. So Mr. Woodman always does a very thorough presentation, so he doesn't leave me with anything new to tell you, but at least I can try to justify what we are planning. As you can see, as, and as Councilman Mitchell just noticed, there is a very good tree canopy there at this location. So our folks would like to preserve as much of that as possible. This shows off of your Alpha GIS, the location map. And as Mr. Woodman stated, the property is currently zoned OP, but your future land use map says it should be a mixed use. Well, if it were to be zoned to DTMU, then there's a lot more flexibility in those front setbacks. And as staff noted, a 10-foot setback would be allowed if it went through the regular zoning process. Mr. Christian tried to simplify this and said, well, we can already do the office under the current zoning. Let's just try to match as closely as possible what the DTMU would be on those front setbacks and save as many trees as we can. As stated, this is the layout that has been proposed. Parking has to be behind and to the side. You also have to be able to have fire access around all sides of the building. So that horseshoe-shaped parking design is not something we can negotiate. It has to be performed. So that's part of the design restrictions that are causing the hardship. Now, under the current OP zoning, our client has a 50-foot building setback from Marietta Street, but also a 65-foot building setback from Old Milton. So you can see in between the blue lines are the only places that they can put a building or a structure currently. So if that were moved back to within the blue lines, one, it would cause underbuilding of the other side, a smaller building, but it also forces all of that horseshoe-shaped parking area back into the trees. So we would submit to you some variance is necessary to preserve the view shed along Old Milton. In particular, as Mr. Woodman was saying, you can see, this is the 29-inch water oak and the 16-inch red oak that would be particularly impacted if that parking space was pushed further back. And again, Mr. Christian and his partners have worked very hard to save that water oak. This design shows pervious pavers. You can see the little different color there of those parking spaces closest to that. So they're spending extra money trying to protect that as best they can. Now, to Councilman Will's question as to setbacks, staff did correctly state that a lot of folks think that you measure the setbacks from the edge of the pavement, and that's not the case. You actually measure it from the front right-of-way. So as Mr. Woodman showed, there is a significant, but matching, front setback. If the building were allowed to be as close as 10 feet from the right-of-way edge, it's matching the neighbors to the west of us and to the recent DTMU that was approved by the city council as well. Again, this was another exhibit that we were showing, tree protection plan. This is the impact plan that Mr. Woodman was referencing. You can see the X's. What this does between this and this is it adds red X's to the map. If that building is pushed further back, those are the trees that are coming down. So you can see, again, the 16-inch red oak along Old Milton as well as the 29-inch water oak south of the parking area. Mr. Woodman already displayed that if city council were comfortable with a 10-foot front setback, this would be in keeping with the character of what's been approved and being developed in the area. And the tree safe plan that's been submitted. So the variance justifications, staff did a very good job in their staff report noting these justifications. And so we will, rather than read them to you, I will incorporate them into our presentation as staff gave. But I think we tried to simplify it, showing it, under the current zoning, there's a limited building envelope, and to fit in that building envelope, it's going to have to push all the parking back to, to remove those trees. And this is the building that's being proposed. So with that, we are here to ask the city council, we originally requested this to be a 10-foot setback. We would submit to you, we think that's appropriate, and that saves the most trees. However, staff has now modified their recommendation, and they said, we'd like you to be 15 feet. If city council sees that's the better route to take, our client is willing to accept that. But, well, and I believe maybe even the most recent proposal was 20 feet. Our client will do what you all ask. However, we would submit to you, A, it's not the best decision for the tree, the view shed along Old Milton, and secondly, we would ask, if you are going to make him push the building back further and take those trees down, that they not have to pay for additional recompense that's caused from that. They are here asking to protect those trees, and we would like the city council to give us some leeway on that. So with that, we're here to work with you. We're not here to argue with you, but we'd like to know what city council feels is the appropriate setback. We'd suggest 10, but we'll work with you, whatever the decision is. With that, we'll reserve any time we have remaining, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions? Councilman Brady?
Yeah, just, I guess there's two, two critical viewpoints, right? One from Marietta, like you said, and one from Old Milton. So as you analyze this property, it's the consideration of you have pedestrians walking up and down Marietta Street, you have more kind of traffic going up and down Old Milton, right? You have a significant amount of trees already coming down. The placement of the building, like you said, is 15 feet off the sidewalk, and there's power lines right there. So I think there's a lot of discussion of the front, you know, tree plants. I think there's, what, 17 plants being planted on the, on the, on the property, several of those in the front of the building with, with an office building, that that would kind of create, you know, obviously, a hidden, kind of keep it nice and, and like you said, the trees, the canopy and all those aesthetics that go along with that. But unfortunately, they're underneath the power line. So the kind of the idea that some people were talking about is pushing it back, you should have a greater canopy in the front, so that pedestrian kind of walkway is granted with the aesthetics of these nice trees. And I know you mentioned these, these two larger kind of trees, I guess, in the back. They're, I think they're significantly below grade, right? From, from Old Milton, I guess, they're about 10 feet below Old Milton or something like that, kind of down. Yeah. So as we look at those, and you're talking about it, because we want to be sensitive, right? If there is any adjustments, but you're not being creative by moving around any other parking spaces in here. You could be a little bit creative of adding, I think there's five parking spaces that go into that critical root zone, but you could move those into different spots and still have your parking and save the tree. There's just, you haven't had time to do that. Would you say that's right?
I'm not certain that we could move those parking spaces back without impacting the critical root zone.
I'm not saying in that particular, could you add, like in those, you could add parking spaces in other areas that you didn't have, the parking spaces that would go into that critical root zone. Is that correct? Between five and six and seven, I mean, you could have positions, I mean, even moving the dumpster, the dumpster could be moved a little bit left, not to go in that critical root zone. I guess what I'm saying is, what we're looking at today, could there be maybe movement here that you wouldn't have a critical...
I'm sure there could be some, some modifications. We obviously have to comply with the Tree Island widths and area requirements, but our client's certainly willing to work with you to accommodate that.
Okay. Like I said, I'm trying to take both perspectives kind of in there, and if we did, then you still have significant views, I mean, plannings in Old Milton, right? So if we happen to lose those, you'd be going down Old Milton, you'd have a really nice new screening, nice new trees there, so you're not really seeing the aesthetics of a parking lot, right? We don't want to see that. Like, I think, seeing a parking lot is something we don't want to see, so you have a lot of plannings along that. And then by moving it back five feet, you might be able to have nice trees and canopies in the front that are not pruned real small that you see. You see these weird designs of...
Understood.
...these wide trees that go on the power lines. We've seen some of those, so just, we give a bigger canopy. I guess that's what I was kind of getting at. I didn't know if there was any creative movement here that we hadn't talked about that maybe you could address.
Just looking at this, again, we have to be able to make sure a fire truck can get around that drive-off in the back. We have to make sure all the angles are correct. Believe it or not, if we were to shift that horseshoe on the east side to where it's angled in a certain way, you might not be able to get a fire truck around. So there are a lot of design requirements. We're relying upon our engineer. He's pretty good, and this is what he says.
We're relying upon our engineer. He's pretty good, and this is what he says is the best layout.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not for this item.
Okay. However, if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll... Come forward, please. Please state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Natasha Diaz, and I live in the Will's Common, 2105 Wilshire Glen. Our house is abutting the property, and we've spoken to several of our neighbors that we have concerns about it. We're going to welcome the property and wish them the best of luck. But we do have to think about how the vote that you all made today is going to impact our downtown area and how it's going to look in the future. There's already been some setbacks that have been approved, and this is a very residential neighborhood, and we'd like to keep it that way in a residential look. So, you know, although, you know, I hope that there are some variations to this project that end up coming through. We would like the Will's Common neighborhood, we do agree that it does need to be set back more than what's being proposed now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment card for this item, Mr. Steve Rondon.
I apologize for not calling you first.
Hi, Steve Rondon, 2085 Wilshire Glen, Will's Common. Upon review, I spoke to a lot of neighbors. I'm on the HOA board there in Will's Common. And, you know, Marietta Street is a very quaint street. There's over 150 homes leading into Marietta Street. I don't know if you folks knew that or not. And along Marietta Street, there's going to be three single-family homes, one already built, and two more coming online within the next year. It's been approved. It's already marked and all that. The house, what they're talking about right next door, is going to be a single-family home to the certain property. So, it's one thing being a two-story, single-family home with the same setback that they're talking compared to this big, two-story, commercial building. We're not against the business coming in, by no means, but we're against the variance of the 10-foot only, because it's not just from the road, it's from the sidewalk. So, if you're walking the dogs like I am, you're seeing this building. It should be set back a little bit to allow larger trees, not crepe myrtles, not bushes, things which would offset the hardness of a commercial building. That's the quaintness of Marietta Street that other people have talked about this. It's not Milton Avenue. It's not Academy. It's at the edge of the downtown overlay in a predominantly residential area. So, you can't use the argument that it's Milton Avenue or Academy in downtown, because it is more residential. As I said, we're not opposed to the two-story. It's zoned for that. It's just the variance. It should be pushed back to allow trees to cover the hardness of the structure. Now, the other alternative could be, everyone's talking about, you know, there's going to be four commercial properties inside there. I don't understand why there needs to be 69 parking spaces. Now, that's a zoning deal from the city of Alpharetta. I don't know why there's 69. If you eliminate those in the back of the building and just push the building back where those parking spots are, you eliminate maybe seven spots or so. That could be an alternative. That's just my personal opinion. I don't understand why. I walk there every day, five times a day. There's maybe in that real estate office, four cars on a given day. So, why do we need 69? For a medical office, a real estate office, and maybe two other professional services? So, that's the argument I would have. If you're going to change the variance, make it for the parking allocation. So, I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodman, would you like to address his question and concern about the parking?
Yeah, so the applicant is, he does have a medical office user in a portion of the building, and then plans to use a portion of the building for a professional office. Typically, the parking rate for a medical office is 1 per 200 or 5 per 1,000 square feet. Professional office is 4 per 1,000. Our rates in the downtown aren't quite, don't require as much parking. The rate for office in downtown is 3 per 1,000. However, because this site is separated from other public parking facilities, we weren't opposed to the applicant providing the parking on the site based on the current rates for medical and professional office throughout the entire city. So, because there's no on-street parking, there's no other public parking facilities, we thought it was important for them to have that parking on the site.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we gave the gentleman at least an explanation from the city's point. Councilman Will?
Michael.
Will you sit down, Michael?
For clarity, I'm six foot tall. We're talking about this much difference to save the trees and the canopy. Is that about right?
That looks about right.
Just for visual, this saves the trees. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Mitchell?
And I want to drop that home too, because I'm also concerned about the appearance of the building and shielding it on Old Milton. And right now, we have a full canopy there, and so I'm for a balance there. So, if you could put up the parking...
The site plan?
Yes. So, it's 3 per 1,000 in the downtown, and is that what this parking is based on? Is that correct?
No, this parking is actually closer to the rate that we have outside of the downtown, so citywide. Citywide, the medical office is 5 per 1,000, professional office is 4 per 1,000. In the downtown, it's only 3 per 1,000. But again, because there is no on-street parking along Marietta Street, there's no other public parking facilities nearby. That's why we were not opposed to the applicant meeting the citywide parking rate for office.
Right. Because what happens if they get an overflow? They wind up parking in the neighborhoods. And what, the reason I wanted you to put this up, if we lost, say, those seven places, all of five, and two of the ones at five, and got the building put back, we would still be cutting down another tree behind the dumpster enclosure. Correct.
This, I believe this tree would still be impacted. Yeah, if you remove these, it could potentially save the specimen tree, but I believe this other red oak would be impacted still.
And I get all the terms and the, you know, other than moving the dumpster to the right-hand side where it might, on that previous drawing that you had, where you could see the actual spaces, if you moved it over to where number five is, and then you'd have a clear backup plan for the truck, but it would still go into the root zone, would it not?
I don't know if the applicant's engineer is possible here. They may be able to respond to that a little bit better than I can. I'm not sure if I'm completely following what you're proposing.
If the dumpster enclosure was on the opposite side where the first number five is?
Okay.
And then, all these other spaces were eliminated in order to make room for keeping the tree there and not having the parking spaces.
I guess there could, it looks like there could be some potential, but again, I'm not the applicant's engineer. I don't know how they have this laid out. I'd probably defer to them to see if they could do, make that change.
Okay. Are they here tonight?
Once we have finished asking questions about this, then I'm glad to give them an opportunity to respond and answer. Any other questions for Mr. Councilman Brady?
So, Michael, I just want to clarify, I guess quantify, like what exactly we're talking about. So, in the downtown, which this is in the downtown district, 3 per 1,000 is 42 spaces required, which is in downtown. We have presented 69, right? So, and you could end this, if you wanted to save the trees in the back. You could eliminate almost seven or eight of those and have 61, which is still way above the 42 that you have in the downtown zone. So, I just want kind of clarity of what we're talking about in parking spaces. Is that correct? Is that, those are numbers you're...
That is correct. The applicant is exceeding the downtown parking rate.
So, I guess is, to save the trees, we'd have to lose a few parking spaces, which is kind of pushing it back, what we're hearing from the residents, putting it back further from the road. And I know we don't have that defined, but that's where we're in here. 42 is the requirement. There's plenty above 42. 69 is what's presented. You could have 61 and save the trees and push it back, and everybody could have a balanced middle ground. Is that kind of what we're talking about?
I mean, I certainly, I think you could lose some parking spaces and save the tree. I don't know if that's what the applicant wants, but...
I just want to quantify it though, like put the numbers of 42 and 69 and what that delta is. Thank you.
Does council have any more questions for staff at this point? Councilman Dorito?
Quick question. Michael, the handicap spaces. Is there a requirement for a medical facility to have a certain level of handicap spaces?
The, I don't know what the exact number is offhand, but I don't know that it's specific to a medical...
There's no requirement for medical...
It's usually per how many spaces, like every 25 spaces, you have one handicap space. I don't remember the exact rate, though.
All right, thank you.
Are there any more questions for staff from council? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Would the applicant come forward and answer any questions and respond?
If I may, Councilman Mitchell and Councilman Brady, it took me a little while to cotton on to what he was requesting there. The answer is, could a dumpster be moved to the east side of the property? Yes, but it would have more wear and tear on pervious pavement. That would have to be replaced more often. Plus, you're putting a dumpster closer to a residential use. I believe this was put on the west side of the property, because that is another office professional. Could a dumpster be put there? Sure, but that's an issue that, you know, we would rely upon city council's wisdom on. And then, finally, as far as removing parking spaces, it is parked 5 per 1,000. I would tell you, at least from my experience, you don't want to have too little parking, especially if you were to have a medical office on the site. Those are used regularly. And you could be creating a situation, I think as staff said, if there is not enough parking, there's going to be a requirement, people parking elsewhere. And then, we just don't want to create any problems. So, we'd highly recommend that the number of parking spaces remain, but we're certainly willing to work with neighbors on the dumpster location. But we're trying to be considerate of the residential user to the east of us.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Councilman Dorito?
I just have a question regarding the architectural design of the building that you showed earlier, or staff showed earlier. Is that both sides of the building?
I'm actually going to introduce my client, Mr. Christian. I think he's dealt more with the architecture than I have, so... State your name and address for the record. Phil Christian, 204 Marietta Street.
Is the architectural rendering you show, which was really the front elevation of the building, I'm assuming?
Yeah, the intent is to do that on...
Is that going to be carried around the entire building?
Would be similar on both sides, yes.
On all four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Mitchell?
Oh, Mr. Christian is up there. If that could be, if the seven spaces that are in the five, number five area, the second five area, and two of the ones that are in the first one, and you relocate the dumpster to the east side, because the pickup could be where it's not harming the neighbor, that could allow a five-foot setback. But would you be willing to lose seven spaces, or do you want to keep them?
I need to keep those seven spaces. We're already at a minimum.
Okay.
For medical use.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Christian, as we look at this, I guess the question is either the parking space or the tree. Which one would you prefer if we set it back? Because you're the applicant, right? We're trying to be very compassionate kind of what we're doing, but also, you know, which one would you prefer?
As Ethan, Mr. Underwood, stated, we've just tried to work with what we had here. We love the trees. We think they would be great. If five more feet is what it took, and we lost those trees, then we're prepared to go, to build it either way, based on the wording that we've already talked about. So...
I know we're talking about parking spaces or the tree. That's what I'm trying to get to, is you want to stick on the parking spaces?
Yeah, parking spaces are required. I mean, I'm already limited now to what I can lease to in the form of medical.
Because you're putting some really nice plantings up around north. I mean, Old Milton is going to look good in aesthetics up there.
Yes.
This is basically, not going to have a huge difference here. I'm trying to balance the Milton and Marietta side and have you on board of what we ultimately would consider.
I can barely hear you. I'm sorry.
So, I want you on board of what we can consider, because this will be two particular trees. We moved it back from Marietta Street. We lose some trees, but you have significant plantings already going in there. And I don't want to give a recompense to you, but the opposite then is we would lose some parking spaces to save the tree. So, it's kind of your choice, so if we move it back...
My plan doesn't work without adequate parking. So, the parking is the most important thing.
And we'd have the plantings there to still have the aesthetics of blocking. It'd look really good if we lost the tree.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We've already done public comment. I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion tonight to approve the V-24-21 Christian/204 Marietta Street setback variance as presented this evening by staff.
Second? We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, a second by Councilman Dorito. As outlined in the motion, is everyone clear on the motion? You looked puzzled. You sure you're clear? Oh, okay. Discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Merkel?
No, I understand this is a sensitive issue, but I think there's a handful of things going on here. Yes, trees are important. They always have been. The city's been very stringent on maintaining those. Very few exceptions are given. The one they are, they're very costly. In this case, if we were to do what the neighbors wanted, to move it back five feet, you would impose hardship on the applicant who didn't need to do that. I think there's an opportunity, being 29 feet away from the street, between the 15 feet, which the applicant wanted 10, right? And then, the city came back and said 20, so we wound up at 15 anyway. So, there's already been a two-way compromise back and forth as far as the landowner and the city goes. I don't think five feet's going to affect the neighbors as much as some might think. I know you want to put trees up and make the building disappear. It just doesn't happen. It is a mixed-use downtown. You're going to have commercial mixed with residential. If you try to reduce the parking, there is no parking on the street of Marietta, but there is no proclusion for parking in your neighborhood. There's really nothing you could do if all of a sudden their customers started parking in your neighborhood and walked down to go to the office building. We've seen that in other parts of the city. It's frustrating. We currently have it up by the AmerisBank Amphitheater. Some of those neighborhoods are kind of stuck. So, I think you can create more problems than what you're trying to fix when you start moving things around and slide the dumpster over here. I don't think tonight's the time to redraw the plans. I think I've heard the applicant loud and clear what they would like to do. I think what they'd like to do is in line with what we're trying to do in the downtown area. So, there's always going to be a little pushing back, pushback and whatnot when you've got residential mixing in with the multiple different types of uses. And I think what the applicant and the city staff worked out here is definitely fair to everybody involved. So, that's why I'm voting this way.
Councilman Will, do you have any discussion points?
So, I just want to be super clear. At 15 feet, we're going to lose those trees in the back. They're asking for 10 feet to save those trees in the back. That's not true? That's what we understand down on this end of the dais.
Councilman, if you'd use your microphone, please?
Currently at 15 feet, which is what staff's recommending, you save the trees in the back. If you reduce that, if you increase that to 20, which is what some of the neighbors want, you lose the trees in the back, and you've got to start with some fresh.
My understanding was if we moved it to 10, we save. At 15, we lose. That was my understanding. And I think maybe a couple of us...
We go to 20, we lose. 15, they stay. 20, they lose.
I need clarification on that just so I'm sure. How do we get that?
It says 15 in the packet.
Would you like Mr. Woodman to tell you that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Woodman, would you tell him that?
If that's true, then I'm fine.
So, the applicant's request was reduced from 50 to 10. This is the site plan that... This is the site plan that they move forward with. This site plan actually shows the building setback at fifteen.
Okay.
The additional five feet that is being discussed would move it back to twenty, and that's what impacts the two trees.
So, the way it stands, the trees are saved.
With this site plan, which is showing a fifteen-foot setback, the trees would be...
Okay, then I'm good. Thank you, I was a little confused.
Want to make sure everybody understands before we vote on it, so... Councilman Mitchell?
Um, this is always, it's always an interesting perspective. Some people want to add more trees up front, and, and, but it's, it's always good if we can maintain the existing tree structure, and I think most of our citizens would agree with that. It, not only from Old Milton, but that we enhance the tree structure on Marietta Street. So, I'm good with keeping it like it is, because most neighbors, I, I was here when every development, and I think our mayor, Jimmy, can agree, when all of those developments where the three hundred neighbors got approved, they all knew going in there that this was a mixed-use street, where it's both commercial and residential, and it's always been that way, even when there was a, there was an old lawnmower repair place, right, right across the street there. But, so, I think it's a beautiful building, and I appreciate you going the extra mile with the architecture, and I know you'll do that with the landscaping, both on the front and in the sides, and, and in the tree wells, and, um, however the vote goes, I, I wish you all luck. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve as outlined by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and seconded by Councilman Dorito, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations. So, the next item up under our public hearing items this evening is the charter amendment for the mayor and council member salary. Ms. Tracy, do you mind reading the ordinance aloud?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a second reading. The first reading of this item occurred during the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting. It's consideration of adoption of an ordinance to amend the Alpharetta City Charter to increase the annual salary of the mayor, to increase the annual salary of the members of the City Council, to provide for the annual adjustment of the salaries of the mayor and members of the City Council, to include the provision of insurance, retirement, workers' compensation, and other employee benefits to the mayor and members of the City Council, to provide for an effective date to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Mr. Loggins?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The presentation was really almost given in the reading of the title, but no changes since first presentation. As the charter provides for today, the salary of the mayor is set at thirty thousand, council member at fifteen. If adopted, this would move that to fifty thousand for the mayor, twenty-five thousand for council member, and would allow for the lesser of a three percent, or in accordance with the increase in pay provided to city employees as an adjustment every year that could occur, the lesser of those two things. Again, no, no change since first presentation, and that's my presentation.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if there's anyone that would like to come forward, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that council approved the charter amendment for the mayor and council member salary as referenced by the city attorney and city administrator.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Hypes and a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? Councilman Mitchell?
I'll have a stab at it. Um, I'm able to vote for this because it really won't affect me much at all, because next November, I'm off anyway, but I do think, I do think this council is severely underpaid. Everyone up here, we know what the salary is coming in, and I get that, but this entire group is paid less than the folks who clean the city hall for us. I mean, that's, that's how low. And we always want quality people running for office and not sacrificing their livelihood, and, and especially when you, when you continue to work for a living, and we want people who are out working for a living to, to serve in these roles. So, if this will help a little bit in that direction, I can vote for it and feel good about it. And another thing I feel good about is that it, if there's no pay raise for the rest of the salary, for the rest of the staff, the council will not get a pay raise. So, only on good years, when, when they get their three percent increase, and will it even be increased? And had it been a three percent increase for the last twenty-five years, it would have been at this rate right now that is being proposed anyway. So, I think it's a long overdue, and, um, and, and so this is the reason why I support it.
And I'll just say, for those of you that weren't here when we had the first reading, I feel similarly, you know. It, it has changed a lot since Councilman Mitchell and I first got elected twelve years ago, and at that time, you know, fifteen thousand dollars was worth a lot more than it is now, and, and the challenge we face now is, I'm not running for election again either, but when I look to the future of our city, I want to make sure that qualified, good, talented people are willing to run, and most people won't. And I understand why. Having run campaigns, I don't blame people who don't want to have to do that, but the cost of running a campaign is more than double what we're currently getting paid, and I think that dissuades people who aren't independently wealthy from ever even attempting to spend twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for some, a, a position that really doesn't even pay you for the time you spend on it. So, I think this is a way to keep our, our governance and our electorate efficient and talented. We want a, a great group of leaders to follow us as we step down, so I do support it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So, that'll wrap up the public hearing. We'll move on to old business. Seems as though we have an old business item that is P H dash two four dash one five, the Gathering. Mr. Woodman, would you like to present?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the applicant's requests and what happened at the last council meeting. The applicant is requesting a change to previous conditions of zoning. This is for the Gathering Development, the corner of Haynes Bridge and Morrison Parkway. The changes that they're requesting are to amend the site plan to remove a four-level parking deck along Haynes Bridge Road, increase the maximum height of townhomes from three to four stories, reduce the minimum height of commercial buildings from twenty-four feet to eighteen feet, and clarify the sculpture requirement. This item was considered at the August nineteenth City Council meeting. Council had some concerns with the applicant's request. Some of those concerns included a lack of a fountain at the corner, impact green space, screening the surface parking lot between buildings C and D, and an additional floor on the townhomes. With that, I'll, I'll limit what I have to say about that. The applicant has provided some new information, and they actually brought each of you a hard copy of their presentation, but at this point, unless you have any questions for me, I would invite the applicant forward to present the new information to council.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Woodman at this time? Thanks, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward?
I'm Tony Bartlett, Executive Vice President with Lincoln Property Company, live at one oh five three five Morton Ridge Drive. First of all, I want to apologize to council. I think last meeting, we were ill-prepared to answer the concerns that, that came up in that meeting, and so I appreciate the opportunity to defer and use that time to get additional input, and hopefully tonight, we can clarify with our presentation really exactly what we are, we are before you tonight to look at. So, with that, a little bit of history, you'll see on your screen that we've compared the two site plans. On the left-hand side is the site plan that is, that was last approved, and then on the right-hand side is what we're offering. So, the, the large circle there shows where we are eliminating the four-story parking garage that is there and replacing that with street-lined activated retail. Additionally, the second circle that you see there did include a dog park that was encompassed in the site. That has not gone away. That is moved to the green space that is just across Acoustic Street. You will note that we have direct connectivity from a sidewalk that runs across Acoustic. That'll be a raised table such that pedestrians are able to come across there and feel comfortable and safe that leads directly into the property itself. In the lower-left corner, a small circle there, we've added a right-in, right-out. One of the first rules of retail is you don't want to drive too far past it to be able to come to it, and so this right-in, right-out allows patrons that are coming in off of Morrison Parkway to, to, to enter and egress directly at the retail itself. I've circled the corner piece because we had a lot of conversation last meeting about that. I will note, just so everybody sees, the previous plan really showed those buildings kind of spread apart and really creating, if you will, a large view corridor into the site itself. We believe that what's appropriate there at the corner of, of Haynes Bridge and Morrison is to really bring the architecture out to the corner, to bring it tight to, to that, that view corridor. I think we're all of the same opinion that this is a really gateway location. It's a, it needs a strong entry sequence into the property, and so we will show you some renderings in the future, but just note that on the site plan itself. Also, want to make note that everybody, as everybody knows, we have high-tension power lines that run through the property. You see the dash lines that are there. No plantings over fifteen feet could be put in that place. No permanent structures can be put into that space as well, and so that does prevent some limitations in terms of how we can, can screen that area. So, we've also asked for a variance from the heights that were previously identified as a minimum of twenty-four feet. It's a pretty high bar and a standard, but there's over thirty feet of fall from what is the western edge of the property down to the corner there at Haynes Bridge and Morrison Parkway. What we, what we seek to do is to create a stair step of buildings with different heights and, and different planes, so that we create something of more interest coming down that slope itself. So, hence the, the, the request to lower the minimum standard to, to eighteen feet, but certainly structures we'll have that'll be beyond that. So, people have asked, so what, what is our vision for the, the center itself? So, I think there are three distinct retail nodes that currently exist in Alpharetta that we would call experiential retail. That is where, where a patron comes, and it's more than just a drive-in, have your shopping experience and leave, that there's something to stay for, something to experience inside of that. Clearly Avalon and Alpharetta City Center are great examples of that. The Maxwell is a smaller, more boutique example of that that has occurred. Coincidentally, the square footage for the Maxwell is approximately the same as what we're proposing here for the Gathering itself. So, at the end of the day, our desire is, is to create a complementary retail experience, not something that cannibalizes what already exists in Alpharetta today, but something that is unique and different. We, we want it to have the convenience and scale and intimacy like that of the Maxwell, but offer an experience that, that has a high-quality design that is equal to and on par with what you see at the city center and at Avalon itself. And there are a number of different ways that we seek to do that, through art, lighting, architecture, et cetera. And then again, lastly, we have connectivity to the Alpha Loop, and we, we seek to maximize that and maximize the benefit as those trails continue to develop and more patrons will come, you know, via that trail itself. Architectural vision. This is something we feel very strongly. We think that there's an opportunity to distinguish the project through the architecture itself. Today, if you look at the landscape in, in Alpharetta, you see a lot of brick and traditional structures, and we think that Alpharetta would be ready for something a little different from that. Our vision for that is more of a California sophisticated feel, something that you might see in Napa or Sonoma, in terms of the scale of that. So, what does that feel like? That feels like more comfortable materials, a lighter feel to it, and some of the images that you see in your package below that reference that vision and thought of what we want to, want to achieve there. We think this is differentiating, and it's on-brand with what the Alpharetta customer would look for. So, here's, here's a viewpoint. Wanted to expand upon some of the comments that were made last time, and hopefully we're addressing a number of those. So, one of the things you see in terms of the buildings, they're really coming up close to the intersection there. You see the glass that's on the left-hand side. We want, we want the experience of that retail, where most of this will be food and beverage, to really come through there, and you feel the energy that, that comes from those restaurants. You'll notice that we have a, a canopy system, if you will, the metal canopy that, that really projects out towards the corner itself. Our desire is to create something that visually wants to draw you up into that space. The actual site for that is about five to six feet above the street level itself, and so the stairwells leading up into that space are very important. We, we think that there's an opportunity, as the rendering shows, to create lights into the treads of those stairwells, so that that creates, if you will, sort of a gateway coming up. Now, we'd like in the future for there to be more pedestrian crossing into that, but today, obviously, most of the patrons are coming through either by car or through the Alpha Loop itself. Hence, our desire to kind of bring those buildings up to the corner and really let them frame that. There are also several other pieces here. We heard some input in terms of materiality. You'll notice the, the walls that are there at the stairwell, we've, we've incorporated stone looks inside of them. We've also, from a planter system, we have introduced, if you will, a serpentine metal, call it guard, that, that we consider to be artful, that will have perforated metal to it such that in the daytime, it allows light to come through. In the evening, it creates unique shadows itself, and so that, you will note, will continue in some of our other renderings. On the far right-hand side, we've also incorporated a fountain feature, so you will note that it's a little hard to see in the renderings, but three shoots of water that come up. Though, we've, we've brought that a little bit from the corner up towards the building itself. We think it, it frames nicely inside the landscaping itself, and it also provides for those who are experiencing that patio to hear that ambient noise that, that comes with it. It'll create a, a unique environment for people sitting on that, that area. While she zoomed into it, the building to the right-hand side, we've introduced for a reference, a muralization of that building. We think there are a number of opportunities to do that. Don't take that mural as a literal one of what we would see there, but what we would see in those murals is something a little less in terms of primary colors and to see more tone on tone, so that the architecture of the building continues to, to, to push through, but we create, if we will, unique opportunities for art to live on these buildings itself. And I'll show you some locations further in the presentation where we would seek to do that elsewhere within the project. Switching to another view that's just up the street a little bit further, you look back and again see the materiality. One of the ways that we seek to address the issues of Haynes Bridge and the views, the, and the views of the parking is through landscaping. We think that while the buildings have a unique sophisticated look to, and we can create color and life and energy with a really robust landscape plan that, that comes out towards the street itself, and you see that referenced and rendered here. Also, a further view, just a little bit further west, again, looking into that space where the easement comes through, the Georgia Power. We've placed trees here that are rendered, that are species specimen that Georgia Power has, has referenced, and you see our serpentine wall that continues to kind of make its way through the project itself. We think that, that making a very strong foreground is what, what really differentiates a lot of times your, your viewpoint. If we have a strong foreground, we believe that a lot that's in the background kind of goes away. We would seek to screen the heights of those cars, but as we mentioned last time, we think it is important to get views into the space itself so that we, people see the action and the interaction that's going on in the green space and the retail that's, that's, that's in the background. So, those are some renderings for it. Looking at the, what I'll call Plan North, the buildings that line Haynes Bridge and Rainwater, I think it's important for council to really understand that while these buildings have a more typical look in terms of retail, they would be double-sided retail, much like the retail that you see at... retail that you see at Liberty Square just, just, just west of Avalon. They've done an excellent job, I believe, you know, with the street-level fronts, and, and so that's a very expensive treatment. I've, I've put a reference image there of what we do not want to do. We do not want these buildings to look like the rear of it is facing that. We want that street activated, and we want to make sure that it, it presents itself well. We've also created street connectivity right there where the Marta drop-off is, or the bus drop-off is, and that would allow access directly into the site itself and a visible point into the project. At the southern end, this is where, you know, most of the energy occurs. This is where the experience lies, and we would have an activated green space, and we've put some reference images there. Our desire is to really create something that appeals to a broad population within Alpharetta. Our desire is to feed, to, to attract families as well, and so that, that green space would be activated accordingly. You see some reference images where there's tunnels and raised areas where children could play. At the same time, we want ample space in that green space where you could activate it with small concerts, fitness opportunities as well that, that could be presented there. So, a very important part of the project itself. And then lastly, a commitment to art. I mentioned the murals before. You'll see that we've identified in blue some corners of buildings what we think create really good opportunities to bring that art through the project itself in various forms and fashions. Clearly storefronts and tenant spaces will influence where that actually occurs, but, but definitely a key component of what we want to engage and, and bring to the project itself. You see some renderings there, some reference renderings in the middle. I think those two in the middle are pretty good examples of that tonal look that almost appears like a tattoo on the building itself, but yet creates real interest to the materiality of, of the project itself. So, very important as well to us. And that gives a, an overview of, of what we would seek to bring, which, again, high-quality retail that we're, we're seeking for this corner and have, have been in the marketplace for several months and are receiving really good feedback to not only this plan, but, but the opportunity there. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Hypes?
Oh, don't.
Questions?
And I apologize, I didn't write your name down.
Tony Bartlett.
Tony? I feel like I've met you before, but nice to see you. Did you all happen to bring a, a site plan of the total property?
Go to the front page.
I, I don't have it in the packet or the printout.
Page two. Page one of your hard copy.
Oh, is it on the front cover page?
Yep, just the first front page.
Like everything else, I should just skip to the...
It's okay.
Okay, well, I'll look back at that here in just a minute, but I appreciate you making that available. Couple of questions. Going back to the retail and everything that fronts Haynes Bridge and, is that West Side there?
Morrison.
Morrison, pardon me. I'm, I'm interested about, as you create this, what's your front door and what's your back door? The parking clearly, for the retailers who are going to be your tenants, are going to come in from the parking side primarily, unlike a downtown where we've got many, many people on the sidewalk and there is parking behind some of the more existing shops. What, what's your front door and what's your back door for these?
Yeah, the, the true front door in terms of where a patron would come in, would come in through the parking areas itself. But, as I was trying to highlight, that's the expense of this type of retail is to create a double-sided, two-sided retail look and feel such that it doesn't appear that we've slighted that from any of the, you know, street views that it would come into the property itself.
And as part of the design, can you tell me if it takes into account how trash and disposal and storage will be handled? Because if you can't put it behind your establishment and you can't put it in front of your establishment, where are you going to put it if this not built into the design?
Very, very astute question.
Thank you.
First of all, I think the, what I'll call Plan North, that retail is going to have to be very carefully curated. We need, the parking is at a, while it meets code, it is certainly below what we would, would love to have on the site itself, so it's a tight site, and that's going to require us between A, B, and C, those buildings, to really maximize the daytime use of that retail. So, to your question, where trash, those buildings are fairly challenged in terms of the access from a trash standpoint itself, and currently, we would have a centralized location that is outside of Building G. I'm not sure if you can see on her screen where she's pointing to her cursor there. That's where you see a, a turn-in there that, that would be screened. There is connectivity through the walkways that come from Buildings A, B, and C where the trash can, can be carted down to that location itself, but food and beverage is going to be predominantly housed in the lower section. The Building C right now, we do have one, we have two active uses there. One would be a daytime salad place of some brand name that you would know, and another would be a bakery. So, we want to, we want to cluster grease traps and, and that kind of trash only in Building C and, and limit that in A and B such that we can navigate the trash.
I'm, I'm familiar with your corner, and by occupational hazard of being on council, I'm familiar with other existing establishments about how far people will walk to take their trash to a, to a dumpster.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's a pretty long walk from A to G if you're carrying trash to a dumpster.
Yes.
And what I want to impress upon you of an importance of mine and get your input here is if your retail establishment, the people who are trying to make money and want to make their best impression to customers who come in on the parking lot side, it's not an option to have anything on the street side.
Right.
People coming in the front door of Alpharetta off of 400, getting a first impression, you, those need to be beautiful, and, you know, I've, I have my own personal opinions, can't speak for anybody else. I, I mean, I like the fact that you have storefronts instead of a parking structure, but if you got dumpsters and storage out there on Haynes Bridge, that's a non-starter.
For sure.
Systemically, how are you dealing with that? If you have only a dumpster at G, I think you're setting yourself up for failure from day one, just by human nature of how people get rid of their stuff.
Councilman Hypes, I don't disagree with you. I mean, definitely the, the power easement coming through creates kind of this bisected retail opportunity. I will say that the strength of Alpharetta as a retail market and the limited opportunities will create some retailers to, who want to be in this marketplace to, if you will, bend from what might be perfect. We've been going through this issue with retailers and establishments today who are asking the same questions. It's not ideal, but that location outside of Building G? G is by far the most screened, and that will be a fully enclosed dumpster pad. It will be probably one of the nicest dumpster pads that you will, you will see. It'll be invisible to the site, but I, I hear your concerns and understand it.
Yeah, I, I would be far more comforted if there was something that was enclosed and yet aesthetically pleasing up on the, the A building or potentially the B building, but where the A and B building at least have a shot of somebody who's an hourly-paid worker
Right.
taking the trash out. Because we've dealt with this independent of whatever you're designing here, but if you design a flaw, the flaw will be, become apparent.
I think that, that's something we can continue to, to look at in, in terms of trying to find the most optimum solution there.
A totally different topic. Does any of this, be it on the street side or parking side, incorporate any type of sidewalk dining?
Oh, yes. So, within Building C itself, you see where there's a little number seven that is, if you will, Plan South between the parking lot. That's an elevated and raised area that would be outdoor dining for that. Also, where she is showing her cursor, that's intentional for that to be outdoor dining there. All of the, all of the F and B that would be down around the green space, all of that would be circular and have outdoor dining that would, that would circumvent the, the green lawn.
Is there any outdoor dining contemplated on the street side to create?
No, sir.
Pardon?
No, sir.
And if you're able to, are you familiar with the, the green that's in front of the Regal Theater at Avalon and our town green here? What is, in, in comparison, this green that you have, what is that close to?
In terms of size?
Yes, sir.
I think, yeah, we, we measured the green space here at 6,500 square feet.
And is that?
I'm not positive about...
Is that more Avalon or more?
That's us, our, our green.
No, in terms of comparable size.
You know, I, I think this would be smaller than what, what we would see at Avalon.
And lastly, I, it's really your business plan, and I don't want to get in your business, but, you know, there's, there's another gathering up the road, and there's going to, there's going to be confusion in the marketplace. Have you thought about how that's going to be handled?
Well, that question...
And, and again, if you, if you want to punt on that, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious because, you know, you're gathering Alpharetta, there's another gathering in some other jurisdiction, and I think you all had the name first, but I, you know, to the extent there may be confusion in the marketplace, I'm, I'm rather curious.
It's a good question. It's somewhat of a sore subject for me. We had, we were in the process of getting the name trademarked when they announced, so we did not get it filed in time. That said, all I can say to it is we don't want to change the name. We like it. Our logo's different, and frankly, you know, as you come from Atlanta to Alpharetta, you'll see us first.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting you should. I was just curious, more idle curiosity as much as anything. All right, I appreciate your answer, sir. Thank you.
Just to answer one question, John, that, Councilman Hypes, that you asked is, I would just noted that the green space that we have here is apparently approximately the same size as what you find at Halcyon. And again, I think they've done a very nice job of creating what would be opportunities for children to play, the sand pits and, and, you know, the, the area, this kind of little soccer area, but also generous areas for adults to enjoy as well for other opportunity. We would seek to kind of have that same balance here.
May I approach Tim Merkel?
Let me put a little more detail to what Councilman Hypes was talking about. We have other places that have dumpsters located, like he said, quite a bit of ways. The challenge is, the challenge is during the day, okay? There's, there's a place on, on, on North Point Parkway where they put the mop bucket, and when, when the food order comes in, they got the empty boxes. Those get stuck outside the front door facing Old Milton, or facing North Point Parkway until 3:00, when the dishwasher gets around to taking the garbage to the dumpster. So, I think what we're talking about here is making sure that there is some sort of temporary staging, if nothing else, where they can put these two- and four-wheel large carts that they put all the garbage bags in while they take it manually to the next place. That's the challenge. They're, they're not going to do it as soon as it fills up. I mean, in a rush hour of lunch, there's no way I'm sending my dishwasher to Building G to have a smoke and drop the bags off and her, hopefully hurry back. So, that's the concern when it comes to talking about back-of-the-house stuff that historically sits in a caged area behind a restaurant that nobody sees unless, except for the employees' parking. So, that's the challenge. And right now, we're in a position where some businesses are probably going to start getting fines for it. And the irony is that the building owners, the landlords, are pretty much telling the tenants, they can't make you do that. So, we will have some teeth that will say we can, in addition to what we already have. I'm just asking you, as the developer, as a property manager at that point, I'm assuming, to take that into consideration and have something. If, if not a full-fledged dumpster at that side, there's got to be staging area that you can do for sanitation, because human nature says it's going outside. That's all.
Understand the concern, and we will continue to, to work on that as we progress on the design to try to create, to mitigate that problem.
We will add, I'm going to add as a condition tonight.
Councilman Dorito?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett, for responding to our concerns in the last meeting. We discussed this. I, I just have maybe three things I want to just ask you about. You, you referred to the, the artwork on the building. I forget what you referred to as the tonal features. How long does something like that kind of sustain itself before it has to be redone? My concern is this, you know, if we approve it with that type of artwork on, on the, on the side of the building, and, and that's right along Haynes Bridge Road there, what's to stop a future tenant or, or maybe a new owner of the property, whatever, of just painting that? Because it's starting to peel or whatever the... That's my concern about, you know, in, in, you know, impregnating, whatever you want to call it, an art, a piece of artwork on a wall that could eventually become, you know, facing Haynes Bridge in the future is looking just like a institutional wall that they just want to paint over to clean it up.
Is the concern that it's, that it's covered up, or is the concern that it would look bad in, in the later?
Do we have protections on that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That was my question. I mean, I should ask, ask that question, but... Secondly, can you show me where the Alpha Loop connection is on the?
Sure.
On the...
Right there. Can you see her cursor?
Yep.
That's the Alpha Loop there. And again, we would have kind of a raised tabletop that would come across there to promote pedestrian access.
Okay. And, and the final question I have is going back to Building G and the, I guess, the trash location, and I know you said it's going to have a beautiful enclosure, probably the best ever. My concern is the, the future residents across from there. I live in a neighborhood that, you know, once a week, very early in the morning, like 5:00, a garbage truck comes, and the, their kind of garbage area is literally maybe 25 feet from the backs of our homes, and it doesn't bother me. I'm just, it does, it does bother other residents, though, who invest in a type of money in the, in your buildings there. And then it becomes a city issue with complaints and stuff. I mean, what, I mean, what, have you thought about the impact to those new residences there that you're going to be selling? And, and I would assume you're going to divulge that to future buyers of those properties, that that garbage location will be there?
Well, undoubtedly, the small transition strip between the retail and the residential will need to be heavily screened and, you know, in that regard. So, whether that's a Leland kind of Cypress screen that, that creates more of a hedge sort of look there, I think that's going to be important, you know, for Adam's product as well, that we, we do a good job screening those two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you for all the work you've done to, to bring this up. I, I really feel like it's a lot better. Could you discuss, I, I know that with the lines, there was something you were telling me, but it didn't get covered in the presentation. The, the visual artwork, I, I want to follow up on the murals. You, you do understand and will follow that if you put a mural there, it's going to be required for future, and, and you'll keep the, you'll, you'll maintain the upkeep of that mural throughout the project as identified in tonight's visuals, right?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay, as well as keep the fountain going throughout the use, okay. And, not that I care anything about that, but, but would you explain the reason you can't put a structure underneath the line? I, I don't think that was covered. And these structures, I think you told me that they have to be removed within a certain...
That's right. This is a Georgia Power regulation that requires, so that they have access underneath those lines, so there can be no, no tree taller than 15 feet. There's specific species of trees that are allowed in that planting, and there can be no permanent structures inside and underneath that easement area itself. Hence, we, but, you know, we looked for opportunities that we can both accomplish that screening element and create a stronger foreground such that the background issues that were raised previously, hopefully, are mitigated.
Okay, all right. And then there was the one other question. I know that Avalon, this is such a big issue because it's been an issue downtown, the, the trash. I'll, I'll bring that up again. I know Avalon handles it by a trolley and a cart that, where they go around periodically throughout the day, because even in our downtown, when they have to walk 200 feet and it's Because even in our downtown, when they have to walk 200 feet and it's reliant on the restaurateur or their staff, is often the lowest-paid staff member. And they will dump it to the closest dumpster and there should be an empty dumpster on further down. But that's been an issue in our downtown. So it's really something we want to avoid completely. And like Councilman Dan was saying, so as soon as you know, I would like to have the staff follow up on that. And I think others may be in agreement on that.
Look, we understand the issue. We share the issue, you know, as managers of it. Clearly, it, you can't, you can't have people either smelling or seeing the kind of trash and rubbish that would be put outside of it. It's a complicated site to try to navigate that, but we understand the concern and will certainly look to try to find a solution that mitigates that.
Thanks so much.
Councilman Brady.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for coming back. I tell you, the difference of a visual effect and bringing us, you know, incorporated into the experience is just so much different. And you guys really put a lot. I know difficult conversations end up being the best relationships you have. And we're somewhat quality-centric, so we take these little details very seriously because that's the difference of having a great experience versus, you know, a sub-experience, which you don't want to spend as much money. You don't want to stay there as long. And those are why we do really well with retail and these experiences in different destinations throughout Alpharetta. So coming back, I know we have new conditions under number one saying that between C and D will be heavily screened. And I know your visual effect shows some crepe myrtles. I know we're going to, a lot of evergreens will probably be incorporated in there. But I know we have, I just want to make sure we're incorporating, there's three green transformers right out there on the front that are pretty damn ugly, right? I mean, just sitting out there. I know in Slide 8, you kind of pick it up a little bit with that green block right there, but there's three of them. Just want to make sure they get screened too, because it is very visual. Is that part of your plan?
Once again, Georgia Power doesn't allow screening, you know, in a, I think it's 10-foot. 10-foot on all sides. And we have rendered them actually in the drawing. We didn't take them out. So you kind of see them referenced in a dark space there to the right, but yes.
So in these images you have here, you're closer than 10 feet. Does that mean there's a certain height from that or is that set back out 10 feet from this image on the right?
It's a good question that I would want to look at a little bit further, but intent is to, we'll have to stay out of that area, but maximize where we bring that serpentine wall in and between.
If you can just do your best to cover those things up, I know with all the incorporations of the utilities. But just also want to say thank you so much for coming back and really kind of showing us and sharing the experience with us.
The only opportunity that sometimes the power company allows is you can muralize them, but sometimes you're drawing more attention to something that you really want to not look at.
Totally agree with you. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion this evening to approve PH-24-15, the gathering as presented this evening, and adding an additional condition which shall read, "Commercial buildings along Haynesbridge Road and Morrison Parkway shall have the same level of detail on all four sides and appears a storefront along Haynesbridge Road and Morrison. Back-of-house functions such as storage and trash containers shall not be visible from the public right-of-way on either side."
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, a second by Councilman Mitchell. A discussion? Councilman Hypes.
I don't know if I'd thank the applicant for coming back and addressing the concerns of council. We all want to make it the best project possible. And I certainly, just for one, like it very much better than with the parking structure. So, but to that end, there was never going to be any trash or storage outside the Haynesbridge side of the parking structure. And I took note many times when I heard the words, "We'll look into it and try." I think some Star Wars movie said, "Try not to do." So with this condition, it's my expectation that the city will enforce this condition, that if there is anything that's not supposed to be on that Haynesbridge side, that that would result in some sort of violation consequence to be at the landowner or the tenant. And I say that not to be mean-spirited, but to get everybody on the same page about building something into the design and systems for that commercial part of the project to be ahead of the problem. And because I, for one, just will fully support enforcing that condition. So with that, look forward to y'all, if this thing passes, you know, moving to completion.
Any other discussion? Councilman Mitchell.
I just want to thank you all. And I think this is a tremendous, tremendously better project. And it's got much, as Councilman Fergal was saying, we really did get into details. And it's important to us because it's important to our community as well. And this really upped the ante. But my only hope is that it's so much better than what we see currently at the Maxwell. I hope you all will take those same principles and do the same at the Maxwell, because that's, has a potential to be a great gathering spot as well. But I'm looking forward to this and I think our community will really get behind it and root for it as well. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve as outlined by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it has passed 6-1. Congratulations. That'll wrap up the whole business for this evening. Move on to new business. First item under new business is the contract approval for Ring Central Communications Contract. Director Montgomery, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The agenda item before you tonight is a contract and purchase approval for Ring Central EX Unified Communications as a Service. This is a 48-month contract with fixed monthly pricing. If approved, the purchase approval tonight would be for 10 months, plus the project management implementation hardware and training for $121,040.94. In 2012, we implemented our current telephone system. While the system has served us well, it has begun to show its age. It lacks modern functionality and security measures needed. System costs an estimated $180,000 annually to operate. In fiscal year 2023, the council funded a capital improvement project to replace this system. Last August, the team and I began reviewing Unified Communications landscape to determine the best product. We had three goals, we had three goals in mind. Our first goal was to find a solution that would integrate with Microsoft Teams. Excuse me. In recent years, we've seen Teams use increase throughout the departments and wanted a tool that worked within a product we already had today and not require a third-party product to be installed or implemented or deployed, or people use just to make a phone call within the city. Our second goal is to have a hosted solution which gives the system availability outside of the network for folks that are working remotely or be wherever they need to be. Hosted solution would allow employees to be anywhere and use the city's phone numbers for communication through other city devices, like a laptop or cellphone. Solution would also, hosted solution would also allow us to reduce our expensive circuitry costs. Phone circuits are expensive, and so we hope to remove some of those. The third goal would be to have a managed service provider for the system. Today, we have AT&amp;T to help manage our telephony system. They've been our managed service provider for the 12 years that we've had the product today. The purposes of this is so that our staff can have a higher level, access to a higher level of support and have an on-call team that we can call anytime should there be an issue or need any configuration changes. Excuse me. Ring Central satisfied all of our goals, while adding additional functionality like faxing capabilities to each line. Last fall, the team and I began researching the market again. We spent several months talking to companies that provided managed services through Microsoft Teams. What we ended up doing, we also, of course, talked to AT&amp;T to see what their offerings were. After those meetings, we zeroed in on Ring Central, which has its own phone system, but operates within the Microsoft Teams application. The differentiator that we found with Ring Central was it provided a higher level of reliability and uptime that we were seeking for a local government in its phone system. At the same time, we began a process of reviewing our current infrastructure. And certainly want to thank the directors that are sitting in the room with me and all the directors in the help with this. We have a lot of phones in the city, as you can imagine. We're buying 466 licenses, over 300 handsets. This took a long time and a lot of process, so I want to acknowledge the team. They really helped us a lot to get this rate and make sure we talk to everybody who had a phone. We also sought the assistance of some third-party help to help us evaluate and prepare for this change. Varanex is a consulting company we've used for many, many years. And we leveraged a relationship with Mr. David Stack, who had no charge to the city, provided his experience and knowledge and base to us. And so wanted to acknowledge him tonight, as he helped us. He spent a lot of hours on phone calls with us as he helped us evaluate and prepare for this change. Ring Central is available through a competitively big cooperative agreement with Sourcewell. Contract number 120122-RNG fits within the service contract we are seeking. And we began discussing scope of work and service agreements with them this spring. The agreement is a 48-month contract that will be paid monthly and have fixed pricing. This year's fiscal impact will be approximately $70,520. This is again for the services side of that contract, the 48-month part of that, the licensing and whatnot. There are one-time costs of implementation and training of $45,520.94. And in the proposal, I'm asking for an additional $5,000 of what we expect to be additional training. It may be some professional services that we just see potentially happening here. All of this brings the request for $121,040.94 for the current fiscal year. That amount is current within budget, so we're not asking for any additional funds. It's all in there in the budget today. Starting next fiscal year, we do expect to see an annual cost of $83,376 for the system. We do expect to see some savings starting in fiscal year, in the next fiscal years, remove the cost of the current system, which is again an estimated $180,000 a year. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Adam. And if I missed it in there, I apologize. We toured a lot of businesses in the city, large corporations. And one thing that we noticed, starting a couple of years ago, is we'd walk in and you'd look at somebody on the tour with you and say, what do you notice is different? You look around, there's no phones. So are we looking to follow, I mean, they do have them, but they've all been issued a handheld. And I think half our staff already has handhelds. At what point do you think it makes sense to move on from a wired system?
So your observation is accurate. And I think that is where we will be eventually. I think there's, this is a big change. People are used to a handset on their desk. And so we gave everyone, all the employees today, we've budgeted enough money to give them a handset now. I think over time, you'll see more and more of those go away. And you'll see people using their computers, using the smartphones that they have with them. We are not buying phones here. We're renting phones in this plan for that purpose. We expect over time, as we see more folks go, hey, wait a minute, I don't really need this. I can pull it out and we don't have to pay for a phone. We haven't paid for a phone. We've just paid for the service.
Right. But let's, I guess my recommendation would be to start that plan. Start that plan to get to there, because these other folks have already figured, they walked in and sort of wiped them out.
Understood. Yeah, if it's greenfield, and it's very easy to do that, you know, our folks are sometimes struggle with change. And so we want to make sure that we're accommodating to them. But yes, we budgeted enough money to give everybody what they asked for as part of the evaluation process. And we did have a few folks that sort of saw the vision that I don't need this handset anymore. And we think we'll see more of those. And so we put the contract in a way that we can take those phones out and it not hurt us financially.
I just want to point out, you're leading that way.
Yes, absolutely.
We're counting on you to.
If I get rid of them, all of them, I get rid of all of them.
All right, thank you.
And yet, Councilman Will.
Adam, I got a couple of questions for you. So currently, we are spending $180,000. This is going to drop it to 80,000 roughly. So we're going to save about $100,000 a year?
Sure, yes.
Sure. I mean, this is very good. That's what it says here. I'm just validating that we're actually saving.
The numbers you're saying are correct.
$100,000 a year.
They're estimates, because we are billed monthly. And so again, as these things change over time, they're estimates.
And we budgeted 200, and we're back to at least 120 this year and 80 next year. So we're saving a significant amount of money there. Okay.
Potentially.
My only, my only real question then is that you've got this budgeted at 121,000, but in your project cost, it says 385,000.
That is the total cost of the contract.
Over?
Four years.
So that's a four-year total cost.
48-month contract with the total cost.
But we are approving 121.
That's for the current fiscal year.
Should we be approving 121 if the total project is 385? What happens in the next year?
It would be subject to appropriation in future years, as any multi-year contract would be. So that becomes a part of the budget process and you all would have to.
So we'll just keep approving this year over year. I've just never seen that done that way before.
So the following years are all operating? So we, those will be approved in those operating year budgets?
I do think it's important that you all know that the current fiscal year cost is a certain dollar figure. But by doing that, we're really starting down a path that eventually will, over four years, end up with a bigger number.
Okay, all right. That's all I got. Thanks.
Councilman Drito.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great thing, Director Montgomery, that you're doing. We utilize Teams in our firm worldwide for, God, probably a year or two now. It's a phenomenally user-friendly system. And it is like having a telephone on your desk, other than you're using your, you could use your iPhone or you can use your desktop, whatever, by downloading the app. It also has, and what I wanted to ask you is, for this price, are we just getting the phone application of Teams? Are we getting the, there's an AI component to Teams now that literally, you can record meetings. They can download notes from the meetings automatically, what was summarized in the meeting. There's all these functionalities within Teams. I'm wondering, are we getting the full package?
No. So what you're talking about is Copilot for Teams. Copilot is what Microsoft, is Microsoft's AI program. I actually had a meeting with the Microsoft folks two weeks ago about Copilot for government. It has not gone live yet. So there are five Copilot offerings, one of them being government. It's the only one not live yet. So we, they, they were saying it's going to go live in the summer. Now they're saying late October. It will happen at some point, government for Copilot. And so we've had a number of employees reach out to start asking about this type of functionality. We're going to try and do some kind of pilot program. It's not, there's a cost to doing these things. And so we want to make sure that we get the value out of that cost. So we'll get, anything that's not artificially intelligent, those features we would get. But anything related to live transaction, or live transcripts, summarizing of the meetings, if you've seen those functionalities, those things are all part of the AI function that we would not have access to yet.
Is the messaging functionality coming with this?
The messaging, yeah. We do messaging today in Teams, yeah. Yeah. It's just, we just can't make phone calls.
I saw you're using Teams today, but.
We use Teams for everything except a phone call out of the environment.
Gotcha.
So this will now basically put a employee's phone number into Teams so they can make a call out and receive a call in.
So the previous cost you put in here, what was it, 100?
For our current cost or 180,000?
Current cost. Did that include the Teams application that you use today?
I'm sorry.
Does that include the Teams application you use today? Is that separate?
No, that's separate.
So what does that cost currently?
180,000 today is.
What does that cost the city currently today for the?
It's included in our Microsoft, so it's hard to break out the pricing there, yeah.
Okay, okay. It's a great system. And the final question I ask is, there are going to be an educational component, because I think when you onboard people, you know, change management is important.
Yeah.
To switch from landline phones or desktop phones to this application, it's actually very, it's very easy to pick up on. And frankly, people love it once they kind of understand how it works and the functionality and all that stuff, so.
I am happy to hear that, yes.
I'm hoping it's part of an educational process from the provider here.
Part of why I've asked for a little extra money there is the training in this will be important. will be important.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
Uh, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to please approve the contract of Ring Central under Sourcewell contract 12022-RNG to provide United Communications as a service in an amount not to exceed $121,400.94 and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Mayor Proton Merkel. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to...
I just, sorry.
Councilman Mitchell?
I just wanted to say, Adam, please thank the rest of the team that spent a lot of time on this. It's always good to see the numbers come down, and I think you've heard a resounding from this council to, to listen, go ahead and educate and move in the direction of deskless phones. So, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Next item is the invitation to bid 25-001, fiscal year 2025, milling and resurfacing Director Sucevich. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is one of our budgeted items, probably our largest capital item that we have within Public Works. It's our milling and resurfacing bid. Allied was the low bidder out of eight firms that submitted, which was a good number to see. We also saw a decrease in the asphalt cost from last year to this year. It's another good sign. So the low bid came in at $3,163,199, and that also includes the striping of all the roads after the fact. So we do temporary striping, and then we'll come back about a month or two months later, and then they'll do the permanent striping. So a little quicker process.
Any correct, any questions for Director Sucevich? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And we have no public comment cards, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone wants to come forward and speak on this paving, now's chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any discussion? I'll just say, let's hurry up and get this done, because nothing is cheaper now than last year. We don't want to pass up. So all those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe someone made a motion yet.
Yeah, we don't.
I think there was enthusiasm for one, but it just wasn't spoken.
I was, I'll make the motion, Mayor.
So do we have a motion?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the award of invitation to bid number 25-001 to Allied Paving Company, Inc., for an amount totaling $3,163,199 for fiscal year 2025 million resurfacing project and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by, Councilman Dorito made the motion, and Councilman Brady made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes quickly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And it does pass unanimously. Thanks, sir.
All motions.
Now, the next item is the resolution for the alcoholic beverage license fee schedule. Ms. Tracy, do you mind?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a consideration of adoption of a resolution to establish fees for alcoholic beverage licenses within the city of Alpharetta.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
Would you like me to present this item to you all this evening?
Yeah.
Or are we ready to approve?
I didn't have that we needed to have that explanation, but if you feel that you need to...
Whatever is the council's preference on this item.
I think our preference is, let's not bother.
Okay. Wonderful.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
However, if anyone would like to come forward, now is your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor making a motion this evening to approve the resolution, the alcoholic beverage license fee schedule that was posted.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Mayor Proton?
You obviously haven't seen it.
Second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Next resolution is Land and Water Conversation Fund Grant, North Park Lighting. Ms. Tracy, once again, there is a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Consideration of adoption of a resolution and approval of a contract to accept the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for the North Park lighting and authorization for the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you very much. Director Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. On January 19th of this year, y'all approved, the council approved us seeking the Land and Water Conservation Fund in the amount of a half a million dollars with a half a million dollar match. We were awarded that through the Department of Natural Resources. That is going to replace 36 wooden poles at North Park and 318 LED lights at North Park on turf, turf one and two, softball fields one through four, the Miracle League field, and the pickle and tennis courts. It requires a, a match which was budgeted. We put, we had money budgeted for lights, and we're going to use that money for the match. It's a million-dollar project that we're getting for half a million dollars. This resolution is required for y'all to approve that so that we can move forward with the grant. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Rogers? Councilman Mitchell?
Mr. Morgan, Director Morgan, the LED lights, are, are we making sure that those are the, the kind that are favorable to most of the neighbors, like the warm white and not the bright blue?
We are, we have, that hasn't been selected yet. The actual light has not been selected yet. That will be part of the procurement process, but we'll certainly make sure that there, that the lights are, are the right lights for the setting and that the light is projected down on the athletic field with as little spillage as possible on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Hypes?
Director Morgan, for starters, just to be very ordinary, speak about this. This is very cool that this is a $990,000 project, and we are like, we're in for half of it, right?
Right.
So, kudos.
Thank you.
Does any of this incorporate any night sky lighting? Or do you know?
I do not know. We have not. Again, we haven't gotten into the procurement process.
Got you.
This was just, but will, that will certainly be part of the procurement process. We will, we will, we will make that part of the process.
Happened to have a passing conversation with somebody from Georgia Power, and they seemed to be very supportive of our, our efforts for night sky lighting, so if that works into the budget or is appropriate, it may not be appropriate for all the type of lighting you're doing, but if it is appropriate, would always encourage anybody in the city to explore that at least.
Certainly will.
Any other questions for Director Rogers? Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Shapiro?
We have no public comment cards, Mr. Mayor.
But if you'd like to come speak on the lights, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that council adopt the resolution and approve the contract to accept the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conversation, Conservation Fund Grant for the North Park lighting and to appropriate as our portion of that for, not, an amount not to exceed $495,000 and to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Councilman Mitchell, and that is to approve the resolution for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. All those in favor, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Next item will be Request for Proposals, 24-112 Downtown Parking Management for the City of Alpharetta. Ms. Tracy, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is consideration of approval to, to award RFP 24-112 to Pivot Parking for Downtown Parking Management Services with a contract term of five years and with authorization for the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. Mr. Lagerblum?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, my presentation will be a lot shorter than it was at the last meeting that this item deferred to tonight. I think individually and then also jointly and maybe even collectively, we've talked about additionally what this is and what is being proposed with this action tonight. There was some confusion as to whether or not we were recommending a parking management vendor, or whether we were recommending an electronic-type app, or we were recommending a certain method to roll this out. If you all approve this tonight by resolution, what you're approving is Phase One of the RFP responses that we received in this parking management proposal at a cost not to exceed $53,197. Again, this would not be the implementation of our parking strategy in the downtown. This is the creation of our parking strategy in the downtown and creation of what we would implement. I've had some conversations, maybe some of you all have as well, about some other parking areas in the city of Alpharetta, notably to our east in the Avalon Development. I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Perry and talk about parking there as it, as it might relate to our downtown parking or as it might not relate to our downtown parking. I think we're all open and keeping an open mind that if there's efficiencies or economies that might exist at some point in the future, we should explore those. If it's not right for Alpharetta, we won't. But in order to get to that point, we need to kick, kick this off and get the Phase One underway. We'll be back to you along the way during Phase One. Certainly wouldn't go into our implementation or execution phase without being back in front of the council, seeking your approval. So with that, I'll limit my comments again tonight since I made a fairly thorough presentation at the last meeting and see if there's any questions, but tonight, if you do adopt this resolution, it would be for Phase One at a cost not to exceed $53,197. Thank you.
Councilman Will?
Mr. Lagerblum, just for clarity, I, I, as I recall, there was a two-year timeframe, there was a six-month timeframe. What's our timeframe for Phase One?
You saw it one place in our staff report, and you saw it a different place maybe in the media, is 28 months. So we're talking in that six-to-seven month timeframe. That will be sufficient to be able to allow us to know seasonally how the data in, in the, in the parking in the downtown is used seasonally, and that, it's good that I think that will get us through a holiday shopping season so that we have the benefit of that data, but the correct number's 28 months.
28?
28 weeks. I'm sorry, 28 weeks. You're looking at me like, that's like seven years, Chris.
There you go.
It is like seven years. 28 weeks.
28 weeks.
28 weeks. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Dorito?
I, I guess I was on the impression that this was going to be a, a single project for Phase One. It notes in here that we'd be approving a five-year contract. Can you explain why we would do something like that?
Because the RFP was one that went out, so if we're awarding this RFP, the RFP contemplates both the, both the award of Phase One, which is the design, as well as Phase Two, which would be implementation, although you're not appropriating any funds to Phase Two. So in order to move forward with a Phase Two, if we chose to do it based upon the RFP that we issued, it would be subject to appropriation, as everything is in our line of, our line of work. So you need to recognize that that's what the RFP actually sought and solicited. If Phase One goes well, our recommendation likely will be that we move on and implement into Phase Two, but you all are not approving or being sought to approve that tonight.
I have severe concerns about that. I didn't, I wasn't under that impression coming into tonight's meeting. I was prepared to support this Phase One contract, but then we're signing a five-year contract. Are we committing to future phases with Pivot?
There would be...
Without knowing what it would cost the taxpayer?
Correct. There would be opportunities, as in any contract, that we, there obviously is the subject-to-appropriation language in there, which has to happen in any multi-year contract with local government as a function of state statute that says that this one city council can't commit a future council. So without citing to the specific language, there would be an opportunity that if all of a sudden we get through Phase One and we choose not to move forward with the Phase Two, we could part ways and do it a different way, but rather than asking you to approve all of it tonight and identify all of the funding to get all the way through both Phase One and Phase Two, this is seeking Phase One.
Logic would tell you, if we're going to sign a five-year contract and we don't want to go forward after Phase One, we have a five-year contract. Why would we go into, even into Phase One if we may not move forward in implementing any recommendations that we see? I'm assuming we, you know, in the future, a future council decides, hey, we don't want to move forward with the recommendations for whatever reason. I, I don't like signing five-year contracts and committing the city to a five-year contract when we don't even know what the result of the initial Phase One assessment would be to consider options for downtown in improving parking or, or delivery zones or whatever comes out of this study, right? I can't support a five-year contract. I'll support the Phase One, but I can't support a five-year contract. It's like going blindly into this and committing the city, if we go through Phase One, we're going to end up going into the next phases, right? And at that point, why not put it out for bid, depending upon what we decide to do as the city, whatever council's here making that decision?
Understood. I guess the only response I would have to that is that if we do this Phase One, as with any multi-year contract, there are out clauses. Now, I think it's, I think it's highly likely that if Phase One goes well, we would recommend to go to Phase Two, but I want you all to feel comfortable that if we choose not to, we're not committed to that, and that this may be a multi-year contract that's presented to you, but there's escape hatches along the way if we choose to go a different direction. That's all I'm suggesting.
And what I'm suggesting is, this is any contract. You don't go into a contract for any number of years unless you know what the full contract terms are and parameters and escape clauses, whatever you want to call from a legal perspective to protect the taxpayer, because we're tied to, this is not against, it could be any vendor we're talking about here.
Sure.
It's just the process of, I would feel more comfortable moving into Phase One, investing taxpayer dollars in the assessment phase, and then we, as a council, decide what our next step should be, and if it's to move forward on some of the recommendations, obviously Pivot would be in a, a good position to help us with that, right? So why commit to that before we even know what the assessment's going to tell us?
Mr. Lagerblum, do you have the language that would...
I could certainly get to it real quick unless you have it, have it pulled up next to me. I've been trying to stay engaged in the conversation as opposed to looking at documents.
I don't have the state law pulled up, but, but Mr. Lagerblum is correct that, that pursuant to state law, multi-year contracts with local governments have to have this statutory language in them that, that identifies the right for the local government to basically have an out, as Mr. Lagerblum has, has already talked about tonight, because of the, of the prohibition against this council binding a future council that doesn't have the opportunity to, to have voted on it.
Okay. I think Councilman Hypes wanted to interject. Can I? Hold on. I'm trying to clarify, because you've had your questions. I want to find out what the rest of council can find out first.
Well, trying to address the heart of Councilman Dorito's concern, it would appear to me that paragraph four of the contract for termination is a termination for cause but not for convenience. but not for convenience. So in order to terminate this contract, there would have to be some alleged or provable violation of the terms of the contract. But I don't read this as saying, if we just decide to terminate at 90 days' notice, we can terminate.
I read it to say that it's for cause and not remedy, but I also read it to say that further this agreement shall terminate immediately and absolutely at such time as appropriated or otherwise unobligated funds are no longer available to satisfy the obligation, which is also included in that Paragraph Four.
So if we defund it?
Okay.
Yes.
So that's what I wanted to know. Do we have a clause that we feel, as council members, that we can get out of this? If you have other questions, Councilman Dorito, feel free.
If I can make a comment, just on— Okay.
Do we have any other questions about that? Okay. Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anybody would like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Please come forward. As you may have heard, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address.
All right. Thank you for having me. My name is Jay Luft. Address is 162 Kenneth Drive. And, Lord, we spoke a week or so ago. Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for having me. My wife said to write this down because I get a little rambling, so. So I'm a proud homeowner in the Garden District of downtown Alpharetta. I'd like to say a few thoughts about the parking solutions being floated around. I do believe that thoughtful and innovative solutions are what our city is all about. I also believe you are honestly trying to figure out a solution that improves our parking problems. But I do disagree in a solution that involves parking meters of any form and paid parking of any form that affects residents, guests, tourists especially, having to pay for parking. So I strongly do not support making anyone pay to park in downtown Alpharetta. Paying to park puts a bad, very bad image on our city, and it just ticks people off. I'd like to note that I am fortunate enough to live within walking distance to downtown. I am not here on behalf of my own interest, but what I feel is in the best interest of this city that I call home. I tend to believe this could have a negative financial impact on our downtown businesses as well. Please, listen to your residents rather than the guidance of a company that plans to profit off of this solution. If paid parking is in your plans for downtown, then you will meet major dissent from homeowners. I urge you to make the right call here. Some solutions: Use technology to show people where parking is available in real time. Use more good old-fashioned signage to direct toward open parking. Offer more valet parking options for those who wish to pay for it. I trust you'll make the right call here and leave paid parking out of the list of the solutions. Leave the parking meters and paid parking to downtown Atlanta and the city just south of us. I appreciate your time. I'm going to leave it with a quick story. So—I don't know, my three minutes is quick here. So I took a family trip to Denver this past summer, and I saw a couple of the cities we went to and the downtown areas, we had to stop in multiple locations around the city. I was very familiar with the parking app that we had to use, and it put a very bad taste in my mouth for these cities in Denver, and I just don't want to see that come here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion tonight to approve the request proposal RFP 24-112 Downtown Parking Management for the city of Alpharetta as presented this evening by Mr. Lagerblum.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion? Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, sir. I would just like to say, in this study, you know, we're basic—we're not committing to paid parking or not paid parking. We're just—it's been a long-time problem for both our businesses and residents, and so we're hoping to find a viable solution that will satisfy the parking issues that we have downtown. And so tonight, we're not committing to a five-year term, or we're not committing to a particular path forward, just a very detailed study of—and this is the first time we've been talking about it for 10 years. So the reason I can support this is this makes it very actionable, and we can move forward on this in a very intelligent way after we've studied what the recommendation is. Thank you.
Councilman Will?
I'd like to echo a little bit of what Doug said, that I also struggle with why we're signing a five-year contract if it's only potentially a $53,000, 28-week deal that we're going to somehow cancel by defunding. Then why go into it in the first place? Why not just do a 28-week contract for $53,000 and give us the option to decide at that point if we want to move forward? The only person that potentially benefits from this is the vendor and not us. And then it gets into this quandary of, well, now we're defunding you. Is that going to be a problem? It just doesn't seem to make sense to me. So I'm struggling with a five-year contract as well. So I don't know what I'm going to do yet.
Councilman Dorito?
I recall from the last presentation by Pivot, they spoke about having a subcontractor. When all my research on Pivot Parking is they are a company that their main revenue comes from managing digital metered parking in different areas. A lot of them in like—I see them in beach communities where they're active, which maybe is more conducive to that type of metered parking, so that you keep turning over the cars or whatever. I listened to Jay intently. I think what I'm struggling even with this topic is, when you look at our city center down here, you know, unless there's some sort of unbelievable business case that I haven't figured out yet that's presented, right now, my sense is, you know, we would change the character of city center if we went toward any sort of metered parking, whether it be digital or whatever, or apps or what have you. Like what Jay said about, you know, using technology to tell people where there's open spaces, that sort of thing. Avalon uses that in their parking decks. The main issue we have downtown is the delivery to the businesses. And you don't have to pay me to tell you what I think the problem is. We just don't have enough parking downtown. And until we either have areas where we can build more parking decks or what have you, you know, it's a successful area of the city that attracts a lot of people. I'm not sure ultimately what the solution may be. But again, you know, they're using a subcontractor to kind of do this assessment, which I don't know much about who that person is or what they do, or what their success is around the country. I'm more concerned about committing the city to a five-year contract, and I understand that there's ways to defund. But, you know, we've had issues in this city, litigation in the city, where we've settled because of litigation, and we have to consider what the cost of litigation would be, because I would think anyone we contract with would have a legal position, a legal right to challenge the city if we were to defund a contract. Even if we think we're in the right, I mean, I just think we'd be—we're going down a path here that may put the city in a very ardent position not to drive the future of what we want to do with our parking components down here. I like the idea of doing an assessment and seeing what the options are to improve parking and improve the delivery of goods to the businesses here, so it doesn't impact the businesses' right to earn a living here. We want them to thrive. It's hard for me to support this. In my business, and I'm not—I'm in the tax field, international tax field, and I'm not suggesting that this is what happens with these parking-type contracts that we're talking about tonight. But, you know, in a capitalistic society such as what we're here in the U.S., I mean, I compete against other accounting firms every day. And we have accounting firms that come in, and they come in with a low-ball figure to get their foot in the door in hopes that they can lock in the greater piece of the business. And I think that that's what a potential contract of five years could do to us by causing that, you know, putting our finger—pressing our finger on the scale toward Pivot for future things that we want to do with the parking downtown. And I just—I don't know why we want to do that. I really don't. And I can't support this.
Anyone else? So I understand the concerns. The benefit of having a contract that we can continue on is, how long has it taken us to get to this point to acquire this contract, whether we approve it or not? It's taken us years to get to this point where we're just trying to find out what the potential solutions are and where the problems are. You perceive some things, but we don't have data yet. I've been trying, as mayor, for years. We know we've got issues. We—I understand nobody wants to pay, but we also have restaurants and shops who have people park in front of their shops and restaurants and then go to a co-working space and keep that space used all day for free. And the only reason any reasonable city is charging for parking is to get turnover, to give the opportunity for people who want to go to a restaurant to have parking turnover to keep it moving. We don't even know how many spaces we might be able to take advantage of because we haven't assessed. How many spaces are on the church parking lots? How many spaces might be available on other privately-owned shopping centers and how we might leverage? I understand there's resistance to parking fees. We don't even have—this isn't about parking fees. This is about, are we going to move forward with this plan that we spent more than a year on just to get to this point of who was—we went to the public. We went to a bid. We had people had the opportunity to bid on this contract, and our staff assessed that of the people who applied for that process, this is the firm that is best positioned to assess our needs and make recommendations. I understand, you don't want to sign a contract for five years if you don't have to. But I don't see how they're at risk if we don't fund it. We just—if we don't see a solution, then we don't fund it. But I'd like to at least have some idea six months from now if we have some plan, because if we say no, if we say no to this contract, we start over from scratch. And so we're talking about a year and a half before we're right back here having this discussion again, because we have to start over, go back out to the market. And I don't think we're in a better position if we postpone this. I don't see how any harm can come from moving forward with this contract. And if we choose not to move into Phase Two, we just don't move into Phase Two. Councilman Hypes?
I may be reading the contract incorrectly, but it does seem to me that both parties can terminate for cause, but only the city can bring an end to this contract by defunding it. And therefore, it's really not us that's being somewhat exposed and putting trust—it's really Pivot who cannot terminate but for cause. So I understand Councilman Dorito's concerns, but I actually, if I look at this termination provision, think it's really quite the opposite, that—for lack of a better term—we're in the driver's seat about what happens next. And Pivot is putting their trust in us that we'll take it to the next phase, but they don't have that option of terminating for convenience, whereas we can defund for convenience. And since their name will go on this contract, it would seem to me that they're agreeing to these terms in the termination provision, so they cannot claim foul like we didn't know what we were signing, so.
Any other discussion? Councilman Dorito?
Councilman Hypes? Can I ask you a question about your comments?
So let's say we moved to Phase Two, whatever that is defined as. And we decide to defund Phase Two, whatever that's defined as. Or let's say we fund it. Are we locked into Pivot doing Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, whatever comes out of this assessment?
Short of giving a legal opinion, which is not my intention, we got somebody over here that does a good job of that.
Maybe I should be asking the city attorney that question.
So I actually want to pump over to that.
Well, I wanted to weigh in, Councilman Hypes. Thank you for your comments. But as well as item number four, which speaks to termination by defunding it, in Paragraph Number Three is where it specifically cites to your state law provision that covers when a council, when a local government body can enter into a multi-year contract. And it has the language in there that's required by state law, and I'm reading directly from the state code right now, which says that any multi-year contract such as this has to provide for these terms. The contract shall terminate absolutely and without further obligation on the part of the municipality at the close of the calendar or fiscal year in which it was executed, and at the close of each succeeding calendar or fiscal year. And additionally, although the contract may provide for an automatic renewal, which this one does, it also provides that it will terminate if action is taken by the municipality to terminate such contract. And in that Section Three of our proposed contract tonight, it does talk about that and talk about the notice that must be provided if the city wishes to terminate. So you are protected in multiple ways under this contract if you should decide that you don't want to move forward further.
What if we defund, whatever you want to call it, or terminate, whatever the proper legal term would be for this contract? And six months later, we decide, you know what? Let's now move forward with some of those recommendations. What happens then? Can we put it out for bid? Can we—
So I think, if I understand your question correctly, what's being funded tonight is just Phase One, correct, which is the study to get you your data that the mayor has talked about already tonight. And so you're not locked into going with Pivot for any services moving forward.
Okay.
Because all your funding is Phase One.
I'm in support of doing this assessment. And as long as I got—and it sounds like I have a comfort level, our city attorney, that we have the flexibility of shifting if we need to, or terminating and then shifting, whatever. Future council might decide to put it out for bid again, right, for next phases. We'll have that ability to do that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Well, it's been a healthy discussion. I mean, the points that have been raised are good points, and we're just trying to get it right. So as long as everybody's had their questions answered, we'll take our vote, as long as I get a motion. We did get a motion. It's been so long ago. Yeah.
Yeah, I already voted it second.
Okay. So that being said, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So the next item up on our agenda is the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. Director Robison?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject on this one. This is the item that I no longer need on the agenda. We're going to pursue this with a facility use agreement instead. I just didn't catch it at the beginning of the meeting and ask you to remove it, so we can simply just remove this item from the agenda.
Thank you for reminding me. You did tell me that earlier today. I just didn't indicate it on my agenda. So that being said, now's opportunity for public comment. Would anyone like to come forward for public comment at this time? Would anyone like to come forward for public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any reports? Councilman Will.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a report that Chief Carl Hall, who has been with Alpharetta for 44 years, starting in, as a volunteer, moving into being a firefighter, and then taking over our 911 and helping develop the technology that we have in our 911 facility, has announced his retirement coming up soon. I just wanted to recognize him as a 44-year member of, of the City of Alpharetta. I bet that's awesome.
It's, it's remarkable.
Yeah.
It is.
That's longer than I've been alive.
Yeah. Councilman Hypes, would you like to clear the air with anything?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to comment or report that Alpharetta Music City has kicked in in high gear. Over the weekend, the Alpharetta Symphony played out to a huge crowd at Union Hill Park. It was very successful, so successful that people didn't even have enough room to park, and then we ran out of parking places. So, that was very encouraging, that, such a community embrace of the symphony. Yeah, feel that one down there. And then, also, I wanted to comment that, I got it here on my iPhone, the, there's Equestrian Community Night on Thursday, September 12th, from 6:00 to 9:00, and there will be live music over at the Equestrian Center. And that can be a pretty great evening put on by the Equestrian folks. If y'all haven't done this, there is a lawn concert that's held periodically, maybe once a month, but it's over at the Arts Center. And you bring a chair and they sit up on the outside patio, and you throw a chair out in the lawn, and it's the Eclectic Lawn Concert Series. And this is the City Lights Experience, and I was reading up on this. This is musicianship with somebody who's played with Eric Clapton, Zac Brown, Marshall Tucker, Les Paul, a couple of people we've heard of. So, that's coming up on Fri, this coming Friday. And then, there's a Home by Dark out here in Brook Street Park Saturday evening. So, the music continues to play, the melodies are great, and Parks and Rec is doing an exceptional job, just bringing a energy and, and great vibe to the city. So, appreciate it.
Any other reports?
I believe we need executive session this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do, and we've got all three topics. We've got real estate litigation and personnel.
Okay. Do we have a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion to recess into executive session.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Will, second by Councilman Mitchell. All those in favor, please vote yes. I dropped my pen in the meeting.
All right, Doug, get us out of here.
Are you saying Doug's gonna make the motion to reconvene?
That's outta here.
I told you to shut up, so I'm gonna shut up.
I told you to shut up. Except your wife may.
She always says that.
Do we have signatures tonight?
I do have a couple.
Doug, did we ever get anything on the books this week?
No, it's gonna be next week.
Okay.
I was gonna reach out tomorrow. I was waiting for my schedule.
No, that's fine, I just thought about when we were talking earlier.
There's a couple things I wanna talk to Dan as well.
Okay.
I'll talk to you on some things.
At the same time?
We could.
If we can coordinate schedules.
I'm outta town next week.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'll meet with you first and then if you're kind of... After I get back, I'm on. I'll be in there.
Second by Council. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to reconvene the City Council? Please vote yes. And it is unanimous. We have reconvened. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, please vote yes. And it is unanimous. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, see you next time.